1221, as the lit- as the lit drawn. And the 1226 application, uh, the hood of the road has been released based on that. I'd like to have a motion to hear application 1222, 1224, and 1227.
I made the motion to hear 1222, 1224, and 1227. Second.
Would you make a second or a third motion?
Aye.
Alright, so approved. Okay, we're gonna skip 1222, and we're gonna go right down to 1224. Armando and Maranda. Okay. Uh, we're gonna go right into what this, I'm telling you how this is only one of the few words. Uh, I call up the applicant and they make the application. And then we ask if there's anyone here in favor of this application, you can come up with the same here please. Then we ask the opposition. The opposition will come, across what they like to say, and then we ask the applicant back up, and then the opposition will come back up. So with that, I'll open up, and I'll let you all hook them up. If you're not familiar with the procedure, you sign in, and uh, talk line up, because we, um, I'm gonna wait to hear if everything is being recorded. I'm looking at, and I guess I forgot the, I was looking at something. But anyway, with that, I'll open up the, at 124, Maranda, Maranda, 1241, Kent Cottage. To reduce the front lot set back to 20 feet to 12.7. To reduce the side yard set back from 15 feet to 12 feet. To reduce the lot width from 75 feet to 72 feet for a two-family resident in an RH3 zone. Do we have somebody here that represents the applicant?
As we do, thank you, Mr. Chairman. My name is Peter Scals, who I practice law on Two Stony Hill Road in Danbury. And I'm here tonight to be happy to hear Cottage Street, which is a residence. Original structure, and I have a memo with the application, it was built in 1853. And the structure was changed to two-family use in 1978. And the applicant got a building permit and did everything, but failed to get a final certificate of occupancy. But they went ahead and used the house as a two-family in 1978 based on the building permit that they received. Uh, it's been taxed as that, and um, and so it complied with the zone at that time, in 1978. So what they're trying to do today is they're trying to finalize their CO, and when they went back to finalize it, they found out that they needed three variants. Because the R3 zone had some different variations. Um, they, it's always been a good faith basis that they've done this, they did convert it, they didn't change the footprint at all. Uh, they, they were taxed as a two-family use, um, and so I'm here tonight to ask for the three variants.
They had all the permits in place?
Correct. Yeah, they just didn't finalize the building permit.
Is this the original footprint of the original house?
Correct.
Okay. No other questions?
And then close the report. Is anyone here in favor of this application? Anyone here in opposition to this application? Thank you very much, 1466.
Thank you.
Next application is 1227, TAD1 LA. Oh, I'm sorry, we have to, well, everyone.
I make a motion to close, uh, 1224.
Close the major segment, all in favor of the motion?
Aye.
We just started this new process to share, because we haven't been placed, we haven't closed the meeting of each applicant. So we will find our numbers closing the meeting and opening up a meeting of new applicants.
Thank you.
Okay, with that, I will open up 1227, TAD1 LLC, Norman Baze, 138 Taylor Avenue. We do submit a lot width regarding the lot from 125 feet to 81 feet, it's in RH3 zone. Do we have somebody here that represents Mr. Baze, LLC? Well, hold on a second, we understand.
Mr. Chairman, back to the Department of Appeals, my name is Paul Jacob, Attorney of Law. I represent 148 here, Hill Avenue, Danbury. And I represent the applicant, TAD1 LLC. And the principal of TAD1 LLC is Norman Baze, and his family. Uh, the property is located at 138 near Hill Avenue. And uh, it was a former homestead for Norman Baze Senior. And has been working with the owner of the property for about 60 years. It's currently vacant, and Mr. Baze wants to renovate and rehab the property. Uh, so the property is located in RH3 zone, which allows numerous multi-family uses. And contains .62 acres, a little over half acre. The variance request is to be minimum lot width of 125 feet to 81 feet. Just let me give you a little background. In March 2012, a couple months ago, we appeared before you and requested a minimum lot width variance to construct two three-family homes. To convert the existing home into a three-family home, and to build a new home in the rear, rear of the existing home. That variance was granted. Uh, the, we explained the hardship at that time, several hardships. One is the lot configuration, it's a long narrow lot. There's plenty of area, just it's a long, you know, typical downtown lot. Uh, the applicant's desire to maintain a historic building. Uh, he wanted to rehab the front building to build another building. And we indicated that the purpose of the regulations would not serve by requiring us to comply with the regulation. In other words, I explained at that time, we could build the six units by building three two-family homes, but it wasn't our desire to, to do that. So uh, you, you did grant the variance at that time. Uh, what Mr. Baze would like to do now, and what we believe is even more acceptable than his previous desires, is just to rehab the front home. Not to build a second, uh, not to build a second three-story, but to rehab the existing home and make six one-bedroom units in that home. And what he's done to show you that it can be accommodated very nicely actually, is submit, submit, I think you all have this, I don't know if you speak the advocate, because I see that you do. You have a, I, I, I.
Oh, that, Chris Duhamel.
Yes, indeed, yes. Yeah, and uh, you can see the first, the basement, it's an unfinished basement, there's nothing that'd be built there. Oh, here goes Mr. Bazuko, he did the design.
Good evening. Oh, he did the design and he did it for him.
Right. The first, the first floor, he's, he's turning into two apartments. The second floor, uh, has, the second floor and third floor are really like, like a penthouse, a two-story, interior two-story, where he has the kitchens and one bedroom. And then on the third floor, he has three other bedrooms, which, which go with the three, three kitchens. So the, on the three floors, there'll be six one-bedrooms, three duplexes, and four duplexes.
Four.
Well, let me go back. No, three duplexes, you're right. Three duplexes and two flats.
That's fine.
Three, three duplexes and three flats. Two flats on the first floor, one flat on the second floor, and the duplexes are on the second.
You're mad when you're a student?
I wasn't, I was spectacular.
And the, uh, more of the city presentation on the plan, the integrity of the building is gonna stay intact.
Yeah, that's what I was gonna show you. He did front elevations, just, just to, to make sure, you know, he, he could do it and all that, he wasn't presenting something that couldn't be accomplished. The front of the building is as it exists, as it exists now, except it will be rehabbed. Uh, the right side elevation, same thing, I'm not familiar with the building, but it's, uh, the rear elevation, if you compare the rear.
The leaning at four.
Yes, yeah. You, you have to look at the survey now, that we submitted, to see the only change in the building, excuse me, the only change in the building is a three-by-ten foot, uh, what we believe to be a, uh, a stairwell. I'm sorry, I thought he was, excuse me, guy, a stairwell.
One of the, oh, boys, the fire stairs.
No, I think it's, it's gonna be covered. Could you look at the rear elevations?
Okay, it's for the wall, it's for the fire stairs.
Yeah. Okay. The doors are covered.
No, door covered.
Yeah, so the elevation shows.
The rear of this lot, is that buildable?
Oh, yes, we had a, you weren't here the last minute.
Okay, but is there an intention to leave that alone?
Yes, all he, you can condition this approval on, all he can go is the six units.
Okay.
Uh, that's fine. The, uh, so, so this way, he, he's not building a second building there, he's just building the one building. He may or may not, sometimes you can condition these, that it be exactly to the plan. He may or not, he may or may not build all the parking, because there's excess parking. So he may build less parking. So as, as long as you don't commit him to building all that parking.
Well, it's gonna be as the plan's submitting, of course, we have to do that.
Well, as long as the parking complies, I think you can say that, if you say.
Okay.
That's right, I, I don't know if you might, that's about it.
I think that, well.
Thank you for your brevity.
I, I think that that plan conforms more to the integrity of the neighborhood than that.
It definitely does, it definitely does. And when he walked out of the meeting last time in March, he said to me, "I have a better idea." And I don't know who brought his attention, but, uh, we know it wasn't Mr. Crane.
No.
Who likes to take credit for all of that.
No, wait till, wait till next time, and he'll be back again, but Tuesday is coming. And that's his idea, Dave.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Are you, uh, is anyone here in favor of this application? Is anyone in opposition to that? Thank you very much, the chairman, almost all of them here. Okay, uh, I need a motion to close this hearing.
I make a motion for 1225. Second.
Mr. Baze, you want to prepare a motion?
Aye.
So, uh, we have the zone, uh, Marcus, as a prepared, so we want to allow this to number one. 1222, Zell Marcus, 114 Triad Street. To grant the use variance to a lot, no recycling, scrap, uh, in an R and four zone district. And, Mr. Marcus, I present the, uh, yeah. Mr. Marcus?
Good evening, Mr. Chair.
I think because of the intensity of this presentation, I would like to have Sean Goff to just bring us up to date on what we had going on last time.
Yes.
Just to let you know.
Yeah, um, afternoon commissioners, my name is Sean Gert, LaZona, Department of Office for the City of Danbury. And uh, just to bring up the speed of the application submitted, and a little bit more about the application history, but, uh, yeah. Um, Department of Appeals has received an application from Attorney Bill Marcus, filed behalf of planning associate LLC for a use variance to section 4b2 of the zoning regulations pursuant to section 11b2b to allow medical recycling, recycling and scrapyard in the RMF forward zoning district. Uh, this issue is currently permitted in the RMF forward zoning district. Uh, previous similar use variance application for the same parcels was submitted to the ZBA and to the strong of the applicant, to his counsel at a public hearing regarding the variance application on October 27th, 2011. It is recommended the ZBA make the record from that application and hearing part of this hearing record for purposes of information obtained therein. In accordance with section 11b4a, the ZBA referred this application to the Planning Commission and the Zoning Commission. Um, for review and report. After due consideration, both commissions issued a recommendation of negative report. It's recommended the ZBA also make the staff report from Sharon B. Colitro, Deputy Planning Director, regarding this application part of this hearing record for purposes of the information obtained therein.
Thank you, uh, Sean, for the update. Now, Mr. Marcus, you're welcome to come up, and you have the, the update.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. As the chair may remember, the commission may remember.
Excuse me, sir, you know, as protocol goes, I have to read the letters that came in for this application.
Okay, sure, that's fine.
Yeah, uh, I don't need to, this is procedure, we have your team, uh, opposition representatives. I only go for a similar, or at least two of them, because two of them represent a, a, a lot of people. They're chairman, gentleman, and lady from the Alliance Association Board of Directors. We are both each tax, uh, junker at 114 Triad Street. We represent the town of Iona, County, and the street. For all the residents that we stand in our opposition. I'm not gonna put it in one letter, I'll go to the next one, because it represents a lot of people. To the commissioner, commission, and ladies, the question of opposition to the expansion of a non-formal use of 114 Triad Street, Danbury and that, I and many other Danburys feel that this expansion does not, does nothing to benefit the city or its residents, impact our neighborhood, or add more scrap, more noise, more pollution, short. We're not looking for one to reduce a lot of the way. I'm not gonna read the rest of the way, but then it's a, the Democratic Committee, as chairman, can, what about Mr. Marcus?
I, I just wanna put into the record that we have a negative recommendation from the Planning Commission, and a negative recommendation from the Zoning Commission, both have been submitted to us.
That's all it's a record, now, Mr. Marcus, can I be in?
Yes.
Okay, I'm, I'm, sorry, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members.
I have one more question, sorry. Look, this is, uh, the application before us shows, you're, you're asking the various on three lots. The front lot, which is the residential lot, and the back two lots, is that correct? Because the line here shows that, on the map, there's a new map there, but just so we know, because it's been advertised that we are, this application, we expect to be submitting the three buildings, making it count for what we're presenting, is that correct?
Well, actually, there are three tax lots.
Okay, are they, I guess my question is, are they the ones that we talked about all together?
No, actually, if you look at the map that we've submitted, that was prepared by, uh, the survey, there's a 40,000, 424-foot, square-foot parcel with an existing property line that is not part of this variance. I mean, it's on the same map, because it's part of the site. Uh, the right-of-way that exists into this property has always crossed over that property, will continue to do that. So the right, which is in the southwest corner of that lot, the right-of-way continues.
Is that the total residential parcel?
That is the total of the area that has been used mostly for residential purposes.
Is that the part, please, is that the part that is zoned residential?
The entire property is zoned residential. There's not anything other than.
Well, that front lot has never been used for anything other than residential.
Well, there's some slight dispute on that, but it's sort of irrelevant, because the proposal before you would limit the use of that property to residential. To be quite honest, see where that frame shed is passing? Prior to my clients owning the property, that frame shed was used as sort of a tire shop. Now, by other people, not by my clients. So to answer your question honestly, or, it has been used over the years, brother.
That's not the question, I posed the question first.
Okay.
I wanna know if your presentation this evening includes the residential piece of property that is on the stamp. That's a simple question. If it doesn't include it, we're all set. But if it doesn't, you know, there's a technicality here.
No, no, the problem is it, you use the term the residential property. Let me, let me break it up, the whole piece is residential.
Okay, let me rephrase.
As you talk about the house lot, use the house lot.
The house lot and the house, is that part of your presentation?
No.
Okay, that is not part of the presentation, Mr. Marcus. Then we have advertised this as one whole piece. And if you're making a presentation this evening, not including that part, then technically, we can't by law hear that. You have to come back and resubmit. If you are making a presentation with the entire piece, including the house, then you can go forward. It's a very simple deduction, so I'm, I agree with that too. And that's the way I present my question for you here.
The, the right-of-way that serves the rear portion of the property crosses what we'll talk about tonight is the house lot. The, the frame drawing in number 114. So, I guess it's the spin you wanna put on it. That right-of-way exists today, it existed 50 years ago, it exists in our application. Other than that right-of-way, the proposal is to put up an evergreen screen and to clearly fence off the part that was the house.
Okay, but that's not the way we advertise it this time. We advertise it as was presented to the board and to the city of Danbury, as the entire parcel is being presented for rezoning for an, uh, in the R and four zone, for the mansion. Now, all I'm saying, legal question, is is that we advertise everything under one parcel. If in fact you are coming in now and you are saying that I've got the right-of-way, but I'm not using the house parcel, then we have to readvertise.
Can I see the legal notice, Mr. Mayor? 114 Triad Street, three tax lots, granting use variance.
Use one address, and that's the question.
It's all, that's the problem that the city of Danbury talks, the city of Danbury calls us all 114. It doesn't distinguish between the front and back of the property.
Well, they have three listings there.
They have three tax lots, tax lots. Generally, I mean, in reality, I would tell you that there's nothing misleading about this legal notice, because the property is at 114 Triad Street. At that address, there are three separate tax lots as advertised. It's to grant the use variance to allow metal recycling scrapyard in an RMF zoning district, which is in fact what's on the property right now. But it's not on the entire property, it's just on a greater portion of it. The property consists of roughly, uh, five acres, just under it, and four acres is metal recycling, et cetera. And one acre is a house. So I think the advertisement is perfectly correct, because of the way the city identifies the property. But I'm happy to readvertise it, I mean, if you think it, I'm not sure how I would, I guess I will eliminate tax.
Well, these, the letters afterward, are those the identification of the three lots?
Tax lots, yes.
Okay, then, then that front lot is a tax lot?
Yes, and that contains the driveway into the rear, so it's connected to the rear.
Yeah, but if you're not asked, you don't need a variance to pass a repass.
No.
Okay, so then that lot in and of itself should not be included in the variance, if you're not going to use it.
But I would be, in other circumstances, I'd be subject to criticism if we didn't show the access into the property.
We're talking about the actual use of a residential house. You are, you're, in the application, that you are requesting the use of that house on one piece of lot. If you're stating now, that you're not gonna use that house, and you're gonna strictly use four acres and leave that house out, then we advertise it wrong. It should have been advertised more clearly, that the front parcel is being, has to be readvertised as state of residential.
Okay, so you're saying that it should have here, but it should say the credit.
Set it for three lots.
To a portion, to allow a portion of property to be used. That's correct, it's portion.
And you should identify the lots that are gonna be used.
Again, I, unfortunately, nobody consults with me on how they notice the legal notice, so I just submit the application. And, you know, quite honestly, when Pat Lee advertises it, she normally doesn't come back to me and ask me if this correctly identifies. So, and when I looked at it, it correctly identifies the three tax lots, it correctly identifies the address, and it correctly identifies the request for the variance. But if it's misleading to people, that it's not the whole property, it is actually four-fifths of the property, not five-fifths.
Okay, well, this is misleading, because the people that sat there, they, they have the impression that the entire piece is being used. We're saying no, but what is not, we didn't advertise that.
You're right.
Legally, we have, we have to have, we draw the application, and we have to tell you to come back again and tell us, the public would know exactly what we're gonna do.
Actually, the way it's normally handled, when there's been a mis-advertising in the past, that there happened, that, uh, that normally the commission continues the prop, the thing to, the hearing to the next meeting in order to readvertise it correctly, that's what we've done.
That's fine, that's fine, we'll do that, at least we're doing justice to the public. While I do that, Sean, I'll run it sometime.
I think, I think the advertiser can do it, if he readvertised the application properly, just the two lots inside.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Chairman, with a point of information?
Yes.
Just, just one brief, for the record, Tom Beecher, I represent Delz Auto and John Man, U-Rent. The application itself submitted by Mr. Marcus refers to all three lots, so it's not really an advertisement. It's actually responding to the.
Well, that's what the point was bringing up originally, and that's what we're asking him, come back and do it the proper way, because all the people that we're for.
Well, it would require a whole new application on business.
Yes, we would have that.
Well, it does involve all three tax lots, as I said, but only work on two of them.
The application, all three lots.
Give me the variance for the right-of-way, you know that.
I know that, but I didn't ask for it. I'd say, we'll correct the advertising to be exact, I'll work with Sean. We'll advertise it to actually further describe what's done here, we'll say leaving the house untouched, which is what we're talking about, and using only the two.
Unless I'm correct, we advertise it wrong, whatever it can do.
That's right.
Basically, we are here applying again on our advertising.
That's correct.
Based on that, my suggestion is, if I can be corrected for a little bit, that we reschedule it, readvertise it, and we can, we can submit.
I'll have to, we can go with that now, I'll have to talk with council. If the application came in and it wasn't our error, and we advertised it properly, we may be required to submit a new application, but I'm no attorney, so that's a solid attorney.
I would have to say. The application clearly shows three lots.
The map shows three lots.
So I would suggest that, I was only important, I'm sure, those with our council, and those, whatever the council suggests to this board, and to Mr. Hannity, what we should do, but I agree with that. So I'm gonna take them. Yes, well, we can hear them from this on the board.
On the same point, again, for the record, Tom Beecher. The application applies to three lots. You can't segregate, because what happens is you say per application, per plan submitted, so it's a trap. Because if he says, "Oh yeah, I don't mean that lot," then in fact you then just go ahead with this application, with three lots.
Well, we could, we could, you can use that warning.
We're not going ahead with the application, putting it in on the era that was presented before us at this.
We could, we could deny it or prove it with stipulations and just let it be advertised.
Let me just suggest, Mr. Chairman.
I would suggest getting counsel.
This is, this is not the first, yeah, this is not the first time, there've been a couple of times. As you recall, recently, we had a, an advertisement of a lot up on Main Street, Mr. Batista's property. We actually had to advertise that three times to get the legal notice correct. We did that. Actually, finally, Pat Lee asked me to draft legal notice, we did it. I drafted.
We're not blaming the Florida.
No, I'm saying, on other situations involving the planning staff, I think, a property on Marty Brook, where we left one of the tax lots off, because we weren't using that in the application, but it appeared on the map. They may be come back and file an application that included that tax lot. So the city is going sort of different directions, we'll do it whatever way the corporation house it describes.
I would suggest.
That would be my suggestion, Mr. Chairman.
We will abide by whatever the opinion of the corporations.
Right, the, the main street rule was a description issue. This is identified properties, so I'll have to discuss it with them, and then I think if, we could work with council and, uh, keep you informed of whether we're saying, we're re-advertising or, or.
We're representing the city, man, and all these people. You gotta make sure it's done right, but if you don't do it right, you know that, I'm not saying this with any intention to state. I'm not saying this with any intention of stating or not, it wasn't, you know that. But because some here, the line, that it could stop, and yet the whole thing was advertised, it's just brings up that point. And that's why it's there. So, if I heard, I'd like to motion to table this until we get court of counsel lawyers.
Exactly. Continuation has to come from the council.
Well, I'm requesting that you continue this for purposes of publishing renotification in accordance with the agreement with the zoning enforcement officer upon consultation with council.
We can't, we can't.
We can't continue it with the clause that said we're going to go to council, and whatever council says, we're going to abide by. But, what's called said, continue it and do the same thing, it's just a matter of words.
I'd like to continue.
Okay, thank you very much, just continue to say, attorney, I'm sorry, anyone else here? That you realize it's being continued, and you'll put the notification, and I'll come back, and do the same thing all over again, and we'll do it according to the city. Thank you very much.
The web page, Mr. Chair, the web page, Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
What dates, the application, or...
We have, my, uh, the date, we have canceled our next meeting on the twelfth. We're sure that this will be arranged, it will accommodate everybody, how can you know this is the order?
A false, a false...
Oh, thanks for coming.
Hello? Counsel? We're still, we're still conducting.
My apologies.
Please, if you guys, if you're finished with what you were here for, if you could take it outside, that would be wonderful.
My apologies.
We'll give you a couple of minutes.
I had, I had to say before, what he tried to do was, you know, I should, for a hearing. But would you like to know the exact ramifications of approving that lot?
Well, I'm going to table this.
We have a hearing, we will have a hearing.
Well, I'd like, well, I'd like to bring forth, you've just...
There's no, there's no forum for you, I'm sorry, sir, there really is no forum for you to bring it forth. Because nothing is on, nothing is on the table.
Can I say something? I might stick in your head when you try to...
Yeah, but you, you, you can't hear anymore on that case, it'll reopen again, and then you can speak.
Legally, I can't listen to you.
Because if it sticks in their head, it's not a good thing.
Please, I'm sorry.
But we'll be doing it again, okay? They'll get you a chance to speak.
Well, we talked about why we said the public session, why?
That'll be presented at when the hearing is opened again. Right now, it's tabled to a, to a technicality we have to address, but you'll get a chance to talk.
Thank you very much for coming in. Okay, we're going to go to twelve twenty-four, Fernando and Fernando, Lorio, Ten Cottage Street, which is one yard from twenty feet to twelve point seven. Nine yard fifteen to twelve, width seventy-five to seventy-two. Room for vote, discussion.
I make a motion to approve the application. I'm Mo Manera, okay? Fernando, Lorio. Uh, Ten Cottage Street, section four A C, to reduce one yard from twenty feet to twelve point seven. Reduce side yard setback from fifteen feet to twelve feet. Reduce lot width from seventy-five feet to seventy-two feet for two family residents in an R three zoning. Uh, we're doing this per plan submitted, and the story on this is this house predates any zoning and has been in the same spot for longer than I'm alive. Uh, per plan submitted, is in keeping with the health, safety, welfare of the Danbury.
I'll submit a second, I'll bear the motion. I'm so good. That's application, as long as you say, I'm pretty, you know, that one, you're with, you're with, you're on the partners. Uh, I, I think, obviously, uh, they're conforming to the neighborhood. I think there's a lot of plans in the last one was, but that's someone who has a plea, I hope for a vote, discussion.
I make a motion to approve, twelve twenty-seven, ten, I, LLC, Norman Buzey, one thirty-eight Easy Avenue. Section four D three A, to reduce minimum lot width for garden apartments from a hundred and twenty-five feet to eighty-one feet. Uh, the plan is less dense than a previous plan approved, and is more in keeping with the Deer Hill Avenue neighborhood. There are caveats to this approval. Uh, the parking, everything must conform to the lot, lot plan except for the parking as long as it meets the minimum requirements of the city. And no further building will take place in the rear of that lot. Uh, with the agreement, this is with the agreement of the applicant, and shall carry with this variance.
Motion made in second, I'll bear the motion. All right, so approved. And that, that is the lead, we have to, we have to accept the means of a previous meeting, to whom we can have those. I notice on the previous meeting, I have a question.
Yeah.
Me and my campaign. I want my residuals.
I have a motion to adjourn.
I make a motion to adjourn.